Boots on the ground stuff, huh?
Yeah.
Well, if you need some help, give me a call. I got some time.
All right. I'm sure Weber County could use you.
Do they pay?
They do. It's not very much, but they do pay.
I'll do it.
I think it's ten or eleven, ten or eleven dollars an hour.
Oh, I'll do it. I got some time. Then I don't have to clean towels.
That's a pay raise for her and tens of eleven.
Yeah.
I do okay.
All right, well, it is six o'clock, so we'll call the order, our planning commission meeting for June fourteenth of two thousand twenty-two. Um, it's great to have some members of the public here with us tonight. Um, before we get started, um, we'll do the pledge of allegiance and Commissioner Payne will lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Do any of the planning commissioners have any conflicts that they need to declare tonight?
No.
No.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number two, which is approval of the May tenth, two thousand twenty-two, um, regular meeting minutes. Do any of the commissioners have any comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
We have a motion to approve, a second?
Second.
And we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Um, the next item is approval of the May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two work session minutes.
I make a motion to approve the May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two work session minutes.
Have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Have a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously as well. Um, moving on to item number four, um, which is a public hearing to consider amendments to basically the water wise drought landscaping. Um, we'll just, we'll just call it that. You'll see the whole thing in the presentation. Um, but to start with that, um, Steve, I guess you're... Do we have anybody from?
No, it's...
The water, just you, okay?
It's me.
All right.
So bear with me, because it's not on my screen, but it's on those screens. So I'm trying to figure out... Oh, there we go. Okay. Okay, so as mentioned, this is to amend several sections of the zoning code. Uh, chapters ten, more specifically, ten, ten, two, or twenty, uh, requiring front yard landscaping in residential zones. Uh, chapter thirteen, mixed use. Um, ten, thirteen, five landscaping, chapter fourteen, permitted uses. Again, more specifically, ten, fourteen, ten, and ten, fourteen, eleven. And then chapter fifteen, conditional uses, ten, fifteen, seven, and ten, fifteen, eight. And then chapter thirty-one, definitions for irrigation system design and landscaping. Okay.
That was all the stuff I didn't want to say, so...
So as you, as you remember, during the, the last couple of work sessions, we've talked about um, language of how to get it to we can, where we can adopt basically what Weber Basin Water Conservancy, Conservancy District wants the city to adopt in order for citizens to be able to be part of the Flip Your Strip program for the reimbursement portion of it. Um, at the last work session, we kind of ended with language that you guys liked, but I still had to hear from John Perry with Weber Basin on some, some, his review. So some things wording has changed a little bit, but the, the concept is still, is still there. So to begin in ten, ten, twenty-four, where required front yard landscaping in residential zones. Uh, one and two already exist. And before, if you remember, it was leave one as it was, add a number two, and then have two change to three. Uh, but sitting down with Andy, um, it made more sense just to combine the water wise stuff with number one, because it already said you must have landscaping. Um, so that's where we, we, we took out the, the first line, such as not limited to uh, grass, rocks, trees, shrubs, and ground cover. Because in the definition, we'll, we'll get to in a minute, it has that, what your, you know, what landscaping is. So why have it in two places? This one wasn't as specific or specific as the definition. So we decided just to leave it and landscaping as defined. And then you can look and find out exactly what and the plethora of things that are allowed. So to meet the, the Weber Basin stuff, we needed to have the, the stuff that's, the following shall apply. So for single-family residential, uh, turf grass not to exceed thirty-five percent of the total. And here, we used to have square footage of the front and side. They wanted it changed to irrig- irrigable, so space that can be irrigated um, in the front and side yards. Really the same thing, just thirty-five percent of those areas. Uh, no turf grass in park strips or any areas less than eight feet wide. And instead of just saying a drip system is required, uh, they wanted us to use irrigation system design, which will put into the definitions kind of what, what that main is, uh, should be used in areas to conserve water. Um, so that kind of language, again, proceeds through the commercial. Uh, commercial being a little bit more restrictive on the number of, or the amount of turf being used. Uh, so not more than fifteen percent, so in ten, thirteen, five, not more than fifteen percent except for those recreational areas that have been designated. Uh, last thing you want is kids playing on rocks and, you know, on their swing set. So, uh, Weber Basin was okay with having that as an exception. Again, no turf in spaces less than eight feet wide and irrigation system, um, to be designed. Same thing with ten, fourteen, ten, um, the same language being, being applied on the fifteen percent. Um, park strips and stuff not too, and then irrigation system. Uh, fourteen, eleven really is just to add in as they're going through their, their site design standards. Um, to put in a number H with landscaping maintenance, not just to maintain, but to help conserve water. Again, just to emphasize the fact we're here to, to conserve water where we can and when we can. Um, ten, fifteen, seven is just like ten, fourteen, eleven. Um, fourteen is for permitted uses, fifteen is for conditional uses. It's the same language for both sections, so, but we have to amend it. Um, in case someone comes in with a conditional use for a site plan, um, still has the same language, same verbiage in the exact same spots. So even the water conservation and landscape maintenance. So the, the definitions is where really most of it comes into, into play. So an irrigation system design is a drip irrigation. Again, just taking that, putting it in part of the definition. Uh, this is something that Weber Basin wanted in, in the ordinance. Um, and to me, it fit best in the definitions versus in all the language of, you know, you must have landscaping, you know? And then landscaping is, and this is where we kind of broaden the scope of what it is. So turf, grass, vines, ground covers, artificial turf with no concrete underneath. Um, again, artificial turf, if, if it rains, it's just gonna percolate into the ground. Uh, drought tolerant plants, and then also add stone arc chip structural features, including but not limited to. And then putting in what landscaping is not, concrete, asphalt, or other similar materials. I know last time the commission thought of also for the when people cut their curb and they still have that little three-foot area on the one side, uh, to include language like, you know, allow the zoning administrator to determine. Um, it was very difficult to get that language appropriate. But I do have other sections of the code where I can just do that. And to me, it only makes sense. Public Works is for it. So, you know, if it's three or four feet that we have left over on that side, we'll just, if they want to do concrete, they'll can do concrete. I'll still encourage gravel, but if they say, well, can I put concrete? We'll do that. Just won't be in front of the house, which is the, the largest portion of it, so. So staff's recommendation is to approve all that is listed there. I'm not gonna go through it as well um, as discussed in our work sessions as presented tonight.
All right, what questions do we have for Steve? So just to be clear, um, this would apply to any newly constructed, um, properties, both commercial, residential, depending on whether that was the fifteen percent or the twenty-five percent would depend on that.
Right.
But it would apply to new builds, and then if anybody remodeled their front or side yards, then it would also apply.
Re-landscape their property, they would come in, same with a, a single-family home.
Yep, I just want to make sure we're clear about what we're talking about there.
Yeah, if you wanted to maintain your grass at one hundred percent of the front yard and park strips, um, you're exempt from this ordinance unless you want to change.
So it's not forcing anybody to change, but then if I decided to re-landscape my front yard, now this would apply to that.
And all these changes would then allow for Roy citizens to be part of that Flip Your Strip reimbursement program.
Yep, and that's the other thing I want to be clear about, you know, when we're talking about this. Um, obviously Weber Basin is the Water Conservancy District, um, they're making recommendations on the Flip Your Strip. They're not dictating to us what we do in our city. This is our choice, whether we want to, um, go this route. We could go a different route with conservation stuff. We just wouldn't be able to participate in the Flip Your Strip. They do have some requirements there, so that's really kind of, you know, just thinking through the decision we're making here. And I just want to be clear that they're not dictating to us what we do.
I mean, our, our current ordinance allowed for a plethora of landscaping materials, so it wasn't, you know, that we, you couldn't do it now. It's just there's certain vocabulary words and things that they wanted in there in order to be part of that reimbursement, so.
Have any other questions? Those are my questions, so. All right.
Just to be clear, this ordinance doesn't state that the city is gonna be involved in any of that change at all. So any type of change you do, whether it meets the standard of the water district or not, the city is not involved in any reimbursement for any changes.
Well, unless the council decides to do so, and that's kind of their...
Currently.
Yeah, their pervy can do, to do it. No. Roy does not, Roy City is not, unless a brand-new program is created out of there by the city council, participate in Flip Your Strip, or hand out money to citizens, or anything like that, based on these landscaping ordinance changes.
Perfect. Thank you.
You should have just stopped at no. You had us there. Um, yeah, so with that, um, this is an opportunity for a public hearing, so I think a motion is in order, um, for the public hearing.
Motion to go into public hearing?
Have a motion to do the public hearing?
I'll second it.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so now it's the opportunity for anybody in the public that wants to, um, please come up and make your comments. We don't have a large crowd, so we won't limit your time, but just keep your comments brief. Um, that's really important. Um, and then, uh, please state your name and address as you come forward. And any comments you have related to, um, this specific, um, change that we're, we're considering. So anybody from the public that would like to speak to this?
It's been a long time since I've come up, so I thought I would this time. Glenn Moore, twenty-eighty-eight West Thirty-eight Twenty-Five South in Roy. This does not apply, the thirty-five percent does not apply to the backyard, right?
Correct.
Okay, and in that case, go for it.
Front, front and side yard only.
Okay, thank you.
Great question. Any other comments from the public? All right.
Motion to close public hearing.
Have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second, so we'll now, are all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, with that, we'll close the, um, public hearing. Any discussion? Do you have something you wanted to say, Steve?
Well, I'm just glad that she brought that up, because I forgot to present that, that rear yards are excluded, so.
Very good. Any other discussion from any of the commissioners on this? Okay, well, the ball's in our court. We can either approve this, we can table it to discuss it further in a, in another, um, work session, or we can vote to not approve it, so, um, but a motion is in order.
Make a motion to recommend to the city council that they approve the amendments of Title Ten regarding water wise drought tolerant landscaping by amending chapters ten. Um, I said subsection ten, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and thirty-one, as discussed. Second.
Have a second, all in favor? Oh, sorry, this is a roll call, roll call, my bad. Yep, legislative, so I caught myself there.
Commissioner Holbert?
Yes, aye.
Commissioner Bran?
Yes.
Commissioner Payne?
Aye.
Commissioner Tanner?
Aye.
Commissioner Bills?
Aye.
Commissioner Calley?
Aye.
Commissioner Felton?
Aye.
Okay. That passes.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to the administrative items, starting with number five, which is to consider request for site plan and architectural review, um, approval for Railrunner located at approximately twenty-four forty-nine West Four Thousand South. Um, do we have the applicant here for the Railrunner?
I can't see him, he's in orange.
It's not hunting season, don't be afraid. And if you have more than one person, that's fine for both of you to come up too. Um, and if you just please state your name, your address, and then tell us about your project and what you'd like us to know about it.
Uh, Pat Burns, fourteen oh seven North Mountain Road, um, in Ogden, but I feel like I live in Roy. Um, uh, appreciate you guys letting us come in here today. Um, so we're presenting for, we, we're calling, we call it Railrunner. It'd be, uh, the, the project just highlighted in yellow there. And, uh, um, looking at, uh, two-hundred-and-ninety-five townhomes. And, uh, we've, uh, been working with Steve and getting, getting it to meet the, uh, we call it a development agreement, but the zone agreement, whatever, uh, that was, that was proposed and, and voted on and put together. Um, which was, I do a lot of these, and it was done very nice. I do wanna, I give a lot of props to Steve. He did a great job, and the council, um, for putting this together. Um, but, uh, I, um, any questions? I don't know. I, I can keep talking, I talk a lot, but, uh, maybe I should just hit questions, because I can kind of, he's like, ah, he does, he talks a lot. But I gladly take questions and be able to answer anything you can, and I've got the engineer here too, so I'm, I'm, I'm not that smart, so I hire people who are a lot smarter than me, so he can answer all the smart questions.
Do you have any questions from the commission?
Do you have more information on the, just the access points? Could you tell us more about that?
Sure. Yeah, we're coming in off of the main road on the left of the screen right there. And it'll be a public street, a public turnaround. Um, would we call that a roundabout, Steve, or just a turn, a roundabout?
This what it looks like.
Yeah, I, I assume, but...
So if you do go back to the overall, like, the one access is coming out. Forty-eight hundred?
Okay. Yeah. And then there'll be private roads throughout the development, so the roundabout will end the public road, and then the rest will be private.
So it'll be a private road out to, uh, Four Thousand also?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Looks nice.
It does.
But yeah, the main access is off of forty-eight hundred. That's the main, yep. Four Thousand would be the emergency access for, but it does, uh, we worked with the fire department on that, and good to go.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We may have some other questions for you in just a minute, so...
Absolutely. We'll be right here.
All right, we, we won't see you, because you're camouflaged there in the chairs. All right, Steve?
Thanks. I make fun of Pat all the time. He's either bright yellow or bright orange. You can see him from a mile away. So this is a site plan and review, architectural review for Railrunner. Um, this is a very approximate address. Um, because most of those properties down there haven't had a public road, so they haven't been addressed appropriately, so luckily, we'll be able to get that going. Uh, this is a space in between the Union Pacific and UTA rail line and the DNRG trail. Um, again, north and south, it's Four Thousand South and Forty-eight Hundred South. Um, West Park subdivision is to the south of it. So you kind of get a, a general idea of where it's at. Uh, there's eighteen point like six... Yeah. Sixteen point four acres, whatever it happens to be, but, um, of developable land. Um, Commissioner Tanner had asked what the void is, why that little square is, is there. Uh, Hooker Water owns the four and a half acres kind of in that middle. Um, they didn't want to give it all up, but they understood that they needed a connection north to south, so they were able to sell off an acre and a half or so in order to connect the projects to the two streets, but yet keep some land for themselves, uh, for future development, um, when they get to the, around to it. Um, as mentioned, it's supposed to be two-hundred-and-ninety-five, uh, townhomes. Um, the ordinance allows for townhomes and only townhomes. Um, so it was a very good fit. Uh, they do have three types of, of building designs uh, that have been presented. Again, it's a very good concept. It may, you know, change a little bit as, as the actual drawings come, but they'll be very similar to what this is. So they'll have, uh, two-car garages on the main level, uh, living space, a little living space on that main floor, and then the rest of it's above. Have decks to out, you know, look out to the, to the west. Um, again, another variety of, of housing types. Uh, building type two and three are a little smaller than building type one. Um, but again, they're all three-bedroom, um, units. Uh, material, no, I didn't put it in there, it's in your staff report. Material-wise is very similar. Um, hardy plank, stucco, correct me if I'm wrong, brick and stone. Um, it'll be, it, it meets the ordinance for architectural, meets the ordinance for materials. I would like more metal, but that's just me, uh, but the ordinance, you know, doesn't say you, you know, don't have to, so. Um, but in, in essence, it, it can meet, there are some issues. Uh, as within the staff report, you've got the planning portion of the DRC comments. Um, there are issues there, but as a concept layout of the site plan, it's not gonna change drastically. You know, you know, they may lose a unit here, or lose a unit, unit there, or add one here and add one there. Um, just as they go through the, the comments and try to, you know, satisfy them all. But the, kind of the road layout and kind of how the townhomes are gonna be laid out are, is, you know, what you see is basically what you're gonna get. Um, like I said, there might be just little modifications here and there, but it's not, nothing drastic. I wouldn't feel comfortable with having the planning commission approve it, subject to the DRC comments. Architectural-wise, again, it, it would meet the ordinance, um, for materials. The fenestration, the wall planes go in and out quite a bit constantly. Uh, they got a lot of decks and covers and eaves, um, for windows. And, and sometimes, like with this one, it's just a half pitch rather than a full pitch. It goes up one way and then drops down and comes down, so it's a little more architectural in nature. Um, and same with, with this one, so, um, staff would recommend approval, uh, based on the, the staff report and the conditions stated therein.
Thanks, Steve.
Just curious, a lot of units, is there any amenities?
Uh, by ordinance, they're required to.
Just curious what those are.
It's really small, so if you can't see it...
That's why, yeah, I can see that there's some...
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of boweries, it looks like a pickleball court, some open space. Um, those are things that, you know, the five-tooth comb, when I, when we go through it, for them to, to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to.
Play areas for kids, anything like that?
Do what?
Play areas for kids?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that what the circles are?
Yes.
Uh, those look like boweries, again. And the applicant can...
Let me answer that question.
But those are things that are required, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll actually do more than that too, as we're getting going. Also, let me back up. We're gonna be adding some aerospace. I didn't even know what that word was. It was presented, and it was like, what is aerospace? It's metal. So...
Steve likes heavy metal, though.
Yeah. Like Aerosmith.
Aerosmith, I like that, yeah.
Uh, but yes, we were putting a few more amenities, even, to be honest, we'll probably lose a few of the units to add a few more amenities, just because we just drew it to what met the ordinance. I actually did a big study on it, and it said, hey, cut down a little bit of units and make more amenities. So we are actually gonna be doing that, and we just haven't proposed it yet, but I didn't figure anybody'd complain if I took a few units away, so. We will be adding some, some amenities to it as well, some more amenities to it as well.
We need to do, Pat, to the aerospace museum.
That's a little out of the way.
Boy, good boy.
So.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Generally, how far will this be from the trail? Just an estimate of, from the trail to the property?
Uh, so the trail's got a thirty-foot easement from the center of the trail to my property. And then from my property, from the back of the properties, back of the units to the property, I think is another twenty, twenty-five feet? Fifteen to twenty. But there is from the center of the ten-foot trail, thirty feet of space before the edge of the property. So quite, and we, we did get approval from, uh, um...
UTA?
UTA, to get several connections. We were really worried about not having enough connections into the trail, because they're sometimes can be difficult to work with, but they gave us the connections. We have to do, you know, it's the, uh, um, handicap accessible and make sure, but we showed them the elevations, the, I can't even talk tonight, I apologize. The elevations, aerospace, oh wait, wait. The elevation so that, you know, it could be a handicap ramp accessible. And so they granted us quite a few easements, which you just, you just never know, kind of, but it, it worked out well, so. That's a huge amenity to have. That's, that's really good to have the trail right there.
So are you planning on make, like incorporating a trail through the property for, is that part of the?
Yes.
Oh, that's nice.
Yes.
That would be great. It'd make it nice.
And I don't want to commit to it, but we're thinking more of like a, uh... More of like a fitness, you know, kind of you, like fifteen, twenty years ago, they used to do a lot of that where you did different exercises. I'm not saying we'll do the exercises, but where you can walk around it and then hit to the trail. So yeah, that's kind of, we're hitting it, we're kicking that idea around, see how it goes, so. It was Steve's idea.
He's got a good one every once in a while, right?
Yeah.
The only other thing that came to my mind looking at is parking. I mean, that's always, when you talk about... The ordinance requires for three-bedroom, two parking stalls, with all of them having two-car garages, so it meets the ordinance. They're also having, I can't remember the number, um...
Seventy-four additional.
Seventy-four additional visitor parking, so they're, they're overparked. And most company, builders that we've talked to on these type of things, they're, they're aware of the, the need for parking and don't want to underpark something, um, because then it becomes a detriment to them, so. Even though our parking requirements have been reduced a bit, most are still aware of the need. And like I mentioned, there was a hundred and twelve that have driveways long enough for two additional cars, so.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up, yep.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion on this?
Two motions. Two motions.
Motion to approve, move to approve the site plan for Railrunner with the conditions stated in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, anybody want to make the other motion?
I make a motion to, um, approve the architectural review as stated in the planning commission agenda tonight.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Okay, on to agenda item number six, which is, uh, consider request for site plan and architectural review. Um, approval for Kent's Market located at approximately thirty-five Thirty-five West Fifty-Six Hundred South.
How are you guys?
Good, welcome back.
Good to be back.
Good. Um, we just get you to state your name and address to start. Good, um, we just get you to state your name and address to start, and then go ahead from there?
Mike McFarlane, my address is two-eighty-five North Angel Street in Kaysville, Utah. Um, what we've got is on the backside of the Kent's marketplace, kind of where their delivery doors are, they're looking to do a small expansion there to allow for a beer cave cooler on the inside. So the backside of that will bump out, um, to, to allow for that beer cave expansion. I've got kind of some site plan and, and exterior elevations on kind of what that will look like, that I can pass around if you'd like, or if Steve has, oh, there you go. So it'll just be a block bump out, that'll come out, let me see if I've got the details. Yeah, there it is, so that shows about how far out it will come, um, and then we've got all the structural drawings for it as well. So it's a small addition, but since it is a change in exterior, it has to go through planning commission, so I wanted to get your guys' approval on that.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, nice and simple, right?
Yeah, exactly, great, thank you, guys.
Thank you, um, Steve, we'll turn it over to you for a minute.
Hey, as mentioned, this is a site plan and architectural review for Kent's Market, they're at approximately thirty-five Thirty-five West Fifty-Six Hundred South. The aerial, I'm sorry, it kind of looked bad, but the little yellow is the addition. I didn't feel like highlighting the entire project, knowing it was just a small little thing. Um, it does go over property line, but both, the owner of both properties is the same owner, so they signed themselves, yes, you can do that, oh, thank you. So just kind of, the parking's in the back, um, it does appear that this will kind of affect one parking stall, but in the corner there, it's just, um, some sort of utility box or something that, so it doesn't, I thought originally from the site plan that it was a dumpster, and I was concerned that it would be in its way, but when I went there to look at it, I, I didn't have any concern, and, uh, they are so overparked, I'm not worried about the one stall that might be gone. The truck stuff is to the north, just where the, the red Eck or box is, so it won't be in its way, and knowing Dollar Tree's coming to the, the vacant portion there, it won't interfere with their stuff as well. So architecturally, if you can't see it, it's probably a reason, 'cause it's just the same materials as existing building. So staff would just recommend approval of both the site plan and their architecture as presented in the staff report.
Thanks, Steve, I honestly didn't even know there were parking spaces back there, and I live like a block away from Kent, so, I was like, when I was reviewing it in the packet, I was like, oh, wow, there are spaces there, so. Um, yeah, any questions for Steve? Alright, well, a couple of motions are in order.
Make a motion to move to approve the site plan for Kent's Market with the conditions stated in the staff report.
Right, we have a motion to approve architectural, or sorry, this is a site plan.
Site plan.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, we have a second motion.
I move to approve the architectural review for Kent's Market with conditions as stated in the staff report.
Right, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a second, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we will move on to item number seven, thank you for coming and presenting that, we appreciate that. Item number seven is to consider request for architectural review approval for McDonald's, located at approximately forty-seventy South Midland Drive.
Hello, my name is John Hughes, my address is one-two-seven oh four Espera Way, Parker, Colorado. McDonald's is requesting to take out a, an existing window in the, in the vestibule, as you can see there, to add a, um, a presenter window, sliding glass window, so they can, um, bring, when they ask people, be waiting for some, waiting for particular food item, so they can help further people behind them, so they can bring that to the window at that second, uh, and from the vestibule, rather than have to go outside and that way.
Okay.
Seems like a really good idea.
It just helps kinda, it helps push, push people through the, through the drive-through, most of their businesses, seventy-five percent is drive-through anyways, so.
Seems pretty straightforward, so, any questions of anybody? Alright, nice and, nice and quick, thank you, appreciate you coming.
It's a busy location, every morning.
Yep, every morning I look at all the cars, and, yeah. Alright, Steve, we'll give you just a minute here.
Uh, as mentioned, this is just an architectural review for McDonald's there at forty-seventy South Midland Drive. Um, just kind of an aerial portion of where it's at, at Four Thousand and Midland. I think most of us are aware of where that's really at. It is, again, it is a, a small change, the unfortunate part is, I don't have the ability to approve these, so they have to come here. Um, it is just kind of changing, uh, and it's easier for the next view, a large pane window into kind of one that's broken up a bit, uh, they are removing, if you can tell on the picture on the left, an awning that goes out, um, but with the architectural requirements, that wall's only as wide as the doorway and walkway, so it, it's not needed architecturally for the, for the building to approve, to meet the ordinance, there we go.
You don't even have an orange shirt on, Steve.
I don't, it's just a long day, um, and then anything that they, the finished will meet the existing, so, uh, when they pull out the awning and stuff, they'll just repair that area, it still becomes a, a little band, but it's not the awning coming out, so it still has that appearance from the road, but it just doesn't jet out four or five feet, um, so staff would just recommend approval based on comments in the staff report.
Sounds good, and this, this, this doesn't change the site plan at all, this is just an architectural review, so this one we can do in one motion.
Make a motion to approve our char, architectural review for McDonald's with conditions as stated in the staff report.
Alright, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, passes unanimously, um, we will move on to agenda item number eight, which is Commissioners Minute. I don't have anything in particular tonight, do any of the other commissioners have anything that they would like to bring up or address? Quiet group tonight. Alright, Steve, staff update?
Uh, not really much to update, if you just drive around, there's quite a few projects underway, um, from the west to the north, so, um, we don't have a lot of, I mean, the projects tonight, you get approved, it'll still take some time before they get developed. Uh, next meeting, we do have at least two items to, to talk about, um, their ordinance changes, not by staff. So you got citizens and companies that are requesting to change some of the ordinances, so.
Okay. And we won't have a work session this month, 'cause we canceled that because of the primary election, correct?
Yes.
So, just wanna clarify that, not that that's on my mind.
Only because somebody knows this stuff.
Nobody's busy that day, right?
Go, go vote, go vote that day.
Yeah, correct, we won't have another meeting this, this fiscal year.
Yeah, it is fiscal year.
That's it, for me.
Okay.
Unless Brody has something?
He already said no, so. He said it all in one word.
No.
Brody said you'd give us money.
He's, he's probably seen the financial report they're going over right now and going, no, we've got no money.
Nope. Alright, well, the last motion of the night is in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Alright, all, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner Collins isn't here to speak up, so.
Bet you the council meeting's still going, if you guys wanna go down and listen.
Well, that sounds like just a lot of excitement.